It's only Board of Appeals meeting of Wednesday, July 23. At this time, I'm going to call upon everyone to stand so that we can pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd ask that you all remain standing in honor, for a moment of silence, in honor of our soldiers, past and present. Thank you. I'm required to notify everyone that this meeting is being recorded by Dartmouth Community Media. And also, I would like to announce that our next regular scheduled meeting for the Board of Appeals is Wednesday, August 6th of 2025 at 6:00 here in this building. Moving on to the public hearings portion of tonight's meeting, the first matter we have is variance case ZAV 25-4. It's a continued case. The petitioner, applicant is, actually, I was not the acting chairman in that case. Actually, you were the acting chairman in that case.
Right.
So I'm going to ask that you resume your role and your position as acting chairman on this case.
Sure.
And I have already signed the Mullen form acknowledging that I've reviewed-
I haven't. I haven't signed it, but I will.
All right. Did you review it, Walter?
Of course I did.
Okay, great.
You can sign it later.
We can sign it later.
Yeah, all right.
Absolutely go off your representation that you reviewed it. I defer to you.
Okay. So our first meeting on tonight's agenda is variance ZAV 25-4, and this meeting was continued from June 18th. The petitioner applicant is Dion Keletta, and the property is located at 25 Thatcher Street, MAP 122 lot 91-1 in a general residence district. And we opened that hearing on the 18th, so it was advertised in the Chronicle, and we had some comments that we read into the record. The petitioner seeking a variance to reduce the setback from the required 20 feet to zero feet to construct an outdoor deck kitchen grill area in the rear of the house of the property. And this is per Articles 375-10.4 D.1B Development Standards. At the last meeting, there was discussions, I guess, from the board members, there was concerns about extending the structure all the way to the property line and getting a zero feet relief, which is something that we're not very familiar with, or this is not something that we're not accustomed to grant variances for. There was also discussions, I think, at that time with Mr. Keletta. I suggested that he make, he can make a call to the building department, talk to the building commissioner on other options, what we can do with the structure or the deck, because at that time, I couldn't figure out what the deck elevation was, and I believe it was connected to the house. On this hearing tonight, as Attorney Madera stated, he was, he missed the first meeting on this, and also Attorney Feria, they both had the opportunity to look at the minutes and watch the video. So this is per the Mullins rule, they'll be able to sit at this meeting. They both acknowledged that they familiar with the case. At this time, I would ask Mr. Keletta to come up to the podium and let us know what, if you had a chance to discuss with the building commissioner and what we can do with that structure.
Good evening to everyone. I did speak with the building commissioner. I have some additional photographs, if I can pass them up for you to view.
Okay, so we have the photographs, and you did, you had a chance to talk to the building commissioner?
I did. I did speak with the building commissioner, yes.
And what was his reaction?
The roof structure and the privacy wall were in compliance, is my understanding. The only issue is the actual deck itself.
Because it's connected to the house?
Correct. And the issue that I had was, and it, I, my assumption is, that was my assumption, I should have spoken to the commissioner prior, that if it was ground level, it wasn't an issue. Like, for example, if I was to put concrete pavers in the same fashion, it wouldn't be an issue. So that was my assumption, was I was using one medium over another. Instead of using the pavers, I used the wood deck. And that's pretty much my mindset. Again, I should have spoken to the commissioner. I will not make a mistake like that again. But, and another factor as well that I see is, this is, to me, it's a different situation considering the lot type and the location of it. It's not a, it's setback, so it's just, to me, it was a different situation as well.
Did you, did, did the building commissioner have a chance to go to the site to check-
Yes, he did.
Oh, he did?
Yes, he did.
So he looked at the deck?
He actually, I walked it with him.
Okay.
I don't remember the day, I apologize, but I did walk it with him, and one of the inspectors.
Okay. Because looking at this, I don't believe your, I'm not sure if your deck height is higher than 30 inches or something?
No.
Or no?
No.
It's not?
No. If you look at photograph number four, the highest point is roughly 24 inches off the ground.
Yeah. So that was considered then, the deck is considered a structure because it's connected to the, to the, to the house?
That's my understanding of what he mentioned. The deck, I did, again, it's ground level on 80% of it. So it's supported by framing that sits on, on, on or in the ground. Actually, I had to trench out some of it to put some of the framing in.
Yeah, that's why I wasn't sure if that, if there's a threshold on the height of a deck that might be still considered a patio. That's why I'm asking the question.
Yeah, no, I understand.
But I did, I mean, I did go by this afternoon, and I looked at the, I couldn't get into your driveway, actually. It was getting late. I don't know if you saw me.
I did not, no.
Okay. But I, I was looking at it from the cemetery side. With the slats, you can't really see much, you know, behind it.
Yeah, that and the plantings as well, yeah.
So I must, because I saw another house with the gazebo, was that, like, there was some sort of gazebo.
A gazebo?
A gazebo in the back, maybe, over the deck? Is there another house to the cemetery?
There is, there is a house, if you're facing my property from Memorial Avenue, there is a house to the left of me.
But I think, I think it's your property, because it was hard to see, really, with the, with the, but you had a fire pit with chairs-
That is correct, yes, yes.
Between the shed and the, and the, the deck?
There's a fire pit there, yes, correct.
And it's right on the, it's leveled, it's on a patio.
That's ground level, yes.
Right.
Yes, if you look at the photo too, you can see at the bottom where the decking connects to that, that, those are concrete pavers, and you can see the mulch in the bottom right corner. So that's, that's ground level.
Is there, is any of the board members have questions for Mr. Keletta?
I do, I do have a couple of questions. I actually went to your house today.
I did see you, I was in a meeting, I apologize.
That's okay. Very impressive house.
Thank you.
Everything done well.
Thank you.
I noticed that on your number four view from the east, strike that, on your plan there, it said there's a shed.
Yes.
That shed, is that, how many feet away from the property line is that, do you know?
That's over five feet.
Over five feet?
Yes, that was reviewed. The building inspector came down after the first complaint, and he walked the entire property, looked at my shed, looked at my, I have a chicken coop, if you look at the plan on the bottom left.
I saw, I saw the chicken coop, but on the shed, when you said there was a complaint, who complained about the shed?
I, I don't know. I just know the inspector arrived and, and said that there was a complaint, and he needed to review the site, and I walked it with him.
Okay.
And he said the shed was under 200 square feet, and the setback was sufficient.
But somebody had complained.
That's my understanding.
I can't figure out, those people that are in back here wouldn't be complaining about anything, but that's not a joke, but I noticed this, on the east side of your, I think on the east side, it looks like somebody's building a shed.
That's, that's the neighbor, I believe that's the neighbor's property, yeah.
That was, anybody complained about that?
No.
Did you know of?
No.
Okay, a couple of questions. I walked the property. In the last hearing, there was some testimony that there was a, a wall that was leaning against the cemetery fence, and that apparently, maybe there was a roof that was attached to that fence at one time?
There was, yes.
And you took that part of it down?
That is correct.
So that, that fence that's there on your property is not leaning against anybody's fence?
No, there was, there was a piece of trim behind the fence that was leaning, but I stopped that project abruptly when the inspector arrived, so it's not finished. So I just took the piece, there was one piece of AZAC that was leaning against the fence, I removed it, put it aside. Other than that, no, that fence is self-supporting.
Yeah, it is. It's a fence, not a wall, but I don't see it leaning against any piece of property. But what I'm concerned about is, and I looked at this property, and I respect the building commissioner, what, what I think he's saying is, if you use pavers rather than wood, it's a patio, and that you don't need a variance.
Correct.
And as I said, it's a beautiful, beautiful piece of property, and you had a grill there, or maybe a smoker?
Yeah, yes.
And it's, it's a wooden patio, as far as I'm concerned. I don't really, and as I said, I respect the, the opinion of the building commissioner here, but I don't see why you're here before, you know, variance, it's already built. And I didn't realize from, because I went around your property, and I'm sorry, I went around there, I rang the bell and tried to talk to somebody, but I went around from, from the east side, there, it looks like this deck patio is on the ground level.
Most of the deck, about 80% of it, is, is on, on the ground.
And I didn't really notice that it's connected to the house. It really doesn't look like it, it might be close to your house, but I don't see that it's connected to the house. And that's my concern. I mean, I know, I don't know who objected to this, but, because it's already built, but in any event, we're here, and I reviewed the meeting where the board looked at it, and I agree with the board where they say, we don't grant variances to go up zero, zero tolerances to the property line, but there isn't, as far as I'm concerned, there isn't a building, a structure, there's a patio that's made out of wood. And it's actually one of the nicest houses that I've seen in Dartmouth, and I've been around for 100 years. Beautiful piece of property.
Thank you.
I just don't know why you're here. I don't know who objected to the beginning of it, somebody must have objected, so you came, because the property, it's already built.
Yeah, I built, I should have gone to the commissioner prior to it, but-
Okay, but did somebody come to you and give you a cease and desist? Why are you here? That's what I want to know.
The inspector came to the property, saying that they received the complaint.
But he didn't tell you from whom?
No, he did not.
Yeah.
And it wasn't the commissioner, it was one of the inspectors, I don't believe he's, he's with Dartmouth anymore. I believe he retired. And he walked the site with me, saying there was a complaint, I stopped immediately, we walked it, he looked at the shed, he looked at the deck, he looked at the, the privacy wall, he measured the height of the, of the fence. I call it a privacy wall, the height of that wall that you see in photograph number three. He measured that, it was on, under six feet on the flush side. He measured the canopy, told me I needed to cut the canopy back, I did. And then he mentioned that because of the, he considered the deck an extension of the home, that it was part of the property, which is why it was, it went into the 20-foot setback.
Right. Well, I can see that, but I didn't even see it attached to the house or anything, but I looked at it, when I was looking at it, I thought, if you use pavers, then you wouldn't have a problem. Pavers don't get attached to the house, but I don't see this wooden deck attached to the house.
I have, I have beams on either side, and a main beam down the middle. That deck, that deck is self-supported.
I have a few questions, if I may.
Of course.
So, who built this deck for you, Mr. Keletta?
I did, myself.
And you didn't pull a building permit for this?
No, I did not. I didn't believe one was required, but that's, again, neither here nor there at this point.
So you didn't think one was required? So you built the deck?
Correct.
Then you built the top part of this deck?
Yes.
And the top part of this deck was much larger than what it is now?
Yes, it was.
It actually has been since cut back?
That is correct.
So, when did you build this deck?
About, just over a year ago. It's been idle for about a year.
So you built the deck about a year ago?
Correct.
And you built the canopy at the same time?
Yes, I did.
I'll use the word canopy.
Yeah, sure.
So at what point were you told to cut back, or were you asked to cut back the canopy?
The, when the inspector came down and told me that there was a complaint, he gave me, he told me that the only issue I had regarding that roof canopy, the canopy, again, for lack of a better term, that it was on, what I did was, I built that, if you follow that ridge line, I built it out to the wall for privacy. I was trying to be private, to, you know, for separation. That was in violation, he wanted that cut back, I cut it back that following weekend, and again, I haven't done anything else since.
And did he at any point indicate to you that cutting back that roof, that canopy would suffice?
Yes, he did. As long as it was more than five feet from the property line, and that it was under 200 square feet. So when he went out recently, he measured it, it was five foot three or five foot four inches back from the property line, from the fence. I don't know if the chain link fence is the property line or where that sits, but it's over five feet from the property line and under 200 square feet.
But yet, the deck continues to encroach into the setback area.
That's correct.
Because it's connected to the house. And I think this is exactly-
And the thing is, and that's where we lie as a, as a board, we lie with difficulty in this situation, in that I've been on this for about 10 years. I've never granted anyone a zero setback from a property line. Not even in a commercial context can I remember, in the business zoning area or commercial industrial area that we've done one foot, or, I don't recall being, I do remember something on Reed Road with the dogs, the kennels, and what else. That was like four feet, I think we went as little as four feet, maybe three feet on that, but, and the abut there was the town of Dartmouth, I think the town of Dartmouth, they own the property. And we had, we struggled, I struggled with making that decision.
If I, if I may, add something else. I did have the, the thought of putting a, where you see on photograph four, to put a retaining wall up. I believe it would have been just around two feet. I would have filled that in, and I would have put pavers in that, in that area. I didn't want to do that for multiple reasons. Number one, if you put a patio and it's relatively flat, you can't make it perfectly flat, because you need drainage, and I was to put a paver patio, I was concerned that water was going to encroach the house, and it was going to encroach the neighbor. And if all that water that comes down that area comes from near the shed, so the east side of the property, the water all drains around the house, and drains down that 25-foot corridor, for lack of a better, better way to look at it, and it drains to the wetlands, which is on the western side. If I put a patio there, I didn't know where that water was going to go. And I was concerned that, A, cost, and B, where would the water go? Where would that water, I would, I could have flooded my backyard, I could have flooded my basement, I could have had water pouring into the cemetery, and I, I just didn't want to do that. So my thought was to do the wood instead of the pavers, and create that, that way water could drain through it, and still drain that wall that you see on the, on number four, that light gray, that's open underneath it, and the water can drain out and continue with no interference.
The other thing that I struggle with is, I'm always concerned about the old adage, it's easier to ask for forgiveness than it is to ask for permission. And I think this is a situation where, if you had asked for permission, you would never have been able to build this. And I don't like to set precedent where we're going to, I don't want to use the word reward, but we're going to allow people to do something when they do it after the fact, because we feel bad for them, something that they otherwise could not have done to begin with. And I don't, I'm not in a position to condone that, and that's why I struggle with this a little bit. But before I give this any further thought, I'm going to ask the chairman if he can call anyone in opposition, because I want to hear specifically from the abut, what is their concern about, you know, this being up to the property line?
Of course.
So, before I give this any further consideration, because I'll be honest with you, where I feel right now is to deny your request, okay? But I also want to see what the rationale is on the abut, what their justification is for, you know, let's use the word vehemently opposing what you've done there.
Understood.
The fact that you haven't had a building permit, to me, is problematic.
I understand.
You know, today, today's day and age, it's not like it was 30, 40 years ago. You know, you almost need a building permit even when you paint your house.
Yeah, no, I, I'm aware of that.
Most people know this, and to take on something of this size, and an undertaking of this, of this magnitude, a little bit of shame on you.
Yeah.
But let me hear what the other side's going to say, and then I'll give us some further consideration.
Harris, before we hear anybody, I just wanted to ask a question, because I know you're a pretty astute developer and builder. If this gentleman had just put down pavers, would he have to go before the board, the building commission?
My understanding is that the pavers themselves are not considered a structure under the bylaws, and therefore not governed under the bylaws.
That's what I, that's what I-
And I think that's where his, when I listened to the last recording, the inclination of our chairman was to go back to the building inspector, to see whether or not the building inspector's definition of a structure would include this, given that it wasn't necessarily attached to the building. I think that's kind of what you were trying to explore here.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, and I-
He was trying to make us not, he was trying to get us to a point where we wouldn't have to make a difficult decision, one way or the other.
Well, I realize that, and that's why I went to the property too, because this gentleman's got a house there, doesn't look like he was trying to build it and then ask for forgiveness. I don't even know this gentleman, but he did something, he should have got a building permit, but it's my understanding, if he just put pavers down there and made a patio and put his gas grill there, he wouldn't be here.
No.
But I walked the property, and I looked at it, I don't think that's attached to his house. I don't see that as a structure. But it may be attached to the house, but what this board, what this board is deciding, or we're going to decide, maybe, that because he used wood and not pavers, that he had to have a building permit? I think, I think-
There's also another question.
I think what he did, you and I would have done, being lawyers, would have said, I'm going to put, I'm going to put a patio, and it's not attached to my, and we don't have to go to the building department, but it really bothers me that we're here deciding whether this thing is attached to the house. I tried to find, I'm not a contractor, I didn't see where it's attached to the house, but he did a beautiful job. I don't think he did anything to circumvent the building department, and we're here trying, not to try to say to him, hey, you shouldn't do it, don't do it again, and we can't allow this. No, we can't allow it. But I think everything that he's done with his property has been top shelf. He pays a lot of real estate taxes. We're here to decide something, it's like cutting something, slice it really thin, because we got to decide, did you do this without a building permit, and did you violate the zoning bylaws?
And I appreciate that, Walter. And I do, I do value your opinion on this board and off this board, but what I am concerned with is, we, when we make decisions here, there are people on TV that are watching us, that are listening.
I understand that.
There are people that are following, you know, the outcome of our decisions, and I'm concerned with people doing something similar with now, even if they don't build it first, okay? And typically, we usually slap people on their hands when they come to us after they build something without a building permit. This board has slapped someone pretty hard, not that long ago, when we had Mr. Bragger as a building inspector, right in South Dartmouth, and I'm very familiar with that one. Some of those words that were echoed that night, that's still in my, I can still hear them, but-
But Mr. Madera, he just-
But I'm concerned with people, if we allow this, then, so let me finish. Going forward, they now come for relief and say, well, wait a minute, we got something on Tatters Street where they put it with zero, why can't I just ask for two and a half, when they otherwise should be asking for 10? So it's just that, and I know it's not a house, I know it's not a garage, and I know that the roof is setback.
The question is, is it a structure, though? Is it, are we talking about a patio or a structure that he's building that he has to comply with a setback? And you know what, I, I reviewed the minutes of the meeting, and Alan Gerblis quite told this gentleman, he said, we've never done that, and I can't vote for it. I can't vote for it either. But I don't see where he built something right up to the property line. And I also listened to the tape where there was a representation before this board that his, his fence, it was represented to be a wall, it's not a wall, it's a fence, that was leaning on the cemetery property. That's really not an issue here, but that didn't happen. I went down, I looked down the line, nothing is obstructing that fence. I don't even know if the fence is on his property or somebody else's property, but I don't see where this gentleman intentionally put this thing up, and he just testified tonight that the building commissioner went down there and said, cut, cut the roof off the, whatever it is that you, and you did that, right?
Yes, immediately, yes.
What building inspector was that?
I do not remember. He was an, he was an older gentleman, I don't believe he's there anymore, I think he's retired or-
I don't even remember, I went there, I didn't take, I should have taken pictures, but you, you sent the picture, and there's a roof that's over your patio there, which I don't think needs a permit, it's not, it's not close to the property line there, but I'm not here, I'm here, when I look, and I went there and I looked at the property, I really don't see where there's a violation, where he needs a variance. The question, I guess, comes down to, is it a structure?
Let me go, no, he doesn't, let me explain, because in Dart-
Enlighten me.
Yes, and according to, no, I, I don't mean it in a way.
No, I'd just be a physician.
Zoning bylaws in Dartmouth, unfortunately, like some towns and cities, fire escapes or covered or staircases are not considered part of the structure, you don't need, they don't have to meet the setbacks. Unfortunately, in Dartmouth, everything that is connected, a deck or a covered porch, or it's considered part of the structure.
I understand that. What I'm saying to you, I don't think that this, this patio is connected to the house.
It is.
You think so? Have you been there?
No, it's-
No, no, have you been there?
Yeah, because I tell you why it's connected.
No, no, my question is, have you been there?
Yeah, I went there, I didn't expect the patio.
I didn't, I didn't see where it's connected to the house.
If physically, you mean, there must have a ledger, I don't know how we framed it.
Sonotubes, I had sonotubes and two by beams.
But let me, it's connected in the way you step out of your door to the deck.
There isn't a, there isn't a structural connection, but there is, there is an abutment, yes.
Okay, so otherwise, yeah, I don't know if it's nailed to the house or not, but it's connected.
So if we, if we went and took a saw and cut, cut that out, not connected it out, right?
If the house came down the deck, hopefully, if it didn't fall on the deck, the deck would still be there.
This is, okay, just, I can, I can confirm that I did talk to the building inspector, building commissioner, and Randy didn't have an issue with this, with the roof, which, again, this is a public hearing, we're going to hear from the other people that had concern with this.
I'm sorry, did he say he had an issue with the roof?
No, because he told me the structure was under 200 square feet, it's considered a deck, and then it met the five-foot setback.
Correct.
And you're right. He said the deck, although, is connected to the house, that's what he's struggling with. But I didn't get into detail on the height, because a patio, I think you are allowed, a patio can, I'm not sure if it has to be flush with the finished grade, or that might allow you some leverage. That's why I was asking if he had a chance to go take a look. But you said, mostly your deck is kind of leveled, or maybe eight inches higher than, than the finished grade.
Yeah, one side, one side I actually have to dig down.
The east side is higher, because the land slopes from east to west.
That is correct, that is correct.
Okay.
That is correct.
So that's what we're here, I think, but whether, you know, we don't want to go back, you know, with why no permit, I think a permit should have been sought for before, you know, whatever, but, you know, but, so let's focus on the deck itself now, I don't want to go on, you know, the structure is okay, according to the building commissioner. So this is a public hearing, again, and anyone is there, anyone in the audience who would like to voice their opinion, either in, in support or in opposition? Please come to the podium, state your name for the record. Thank you.
Catherine Dias, Keertaker, the South Dartmouth Cemetery. I'm here on behalf of the board of directors at the South Dartmouth Cemetery. I'm here on behalf of the Board of Directors at the South Dartmouth Cemetery. I talked at the meeting back in June. I know you have a letter from Attorney Dan Perry, I believe.
Yes, we had the letter, I think, I, we, I read it into the record, I believe, at that time.
So, I mean, there's really not much more I can say, other than, Dan Perry stated exactly how the Board of Directors feel. The structure, the wall against the fence was built, it was about three years ago when that was put up, with the roof attached to it. So, we spoke to Dave Brunet, who was an inspector at the time, and he never got back to me on anything, but we did all notice that the roof had been cut. And we're just, the Board of Directors are just, we don't know why the wall is still there, and then we got notice about that they wanted to continue, you know, we were against it for the reasons that Dan Perry states in his letter.
Yeah, I, do we have the letter from Dan Perry?
I've, I've got it, if you need to see it.
I read the letter into the record, but I
That's one of the things I wanted to do, I wanted to read it again.
Here, if, if anybody needs it.
Right, well, and, but, so, I don't know if you, you heard the discussions, that the wall is, is okay, because the wall is a fence, so he can go all the way to the property line. And the structure with the roof is okay. The only issue is the deck now. And again, you know, this is what we need to discuss now, you know, and I, I know you, you had concerns about people gathering there and, you know, whatever, and I think I mentioned that if he didn't have that deck, he could place his grill right against the fence and put a chair like he's doing right now, and sit there and have a cookout or, or a fire pit or whatever, there's no zoning requirements for that. The only reason is because of the deck right now, so that's the deck.
Right, it was determined a structure by the, by the building inspector, Dave Brunet.
The deck, because the deck is connected to the house. So now, it's up, I mean, we can grant, I mean, this board can grant variances. We've granted variances before, and I think Attorney Maderas mentioned the case for the doggy, you know, but that was for the building, not for the deck. I don't believe this was for the deck. So, I mean, we have, it's, we're in the zoning board appeal, obviously, you know, we need to look at this case, it's a case-by-case basis, you know, so we need to look, what's the impact on the neighbors, what they, you know, and we understand the setting and all that, so I think we'll, is there anything that you would like to add from last meeting?
From what I said at the June meeting, and just from the letter from Attorney Dan Perry, and the, and the photos that I provided, and, you know,
Okay.
The Board of Directors, we're not against Mr. Calhada, we're just
Right.
you know, we don't even know each other, we're just, we're just against the structure out of the, um,
Being against your property line.
You know, out of concern for the cemetery. So, that's
Mr. Chair, do we have a list of the Board of Directors for the cemetery? If we see, we, if we received any letters from the Board of Trustees or whatever, from them?
If I just
Just from them?
If I may, just for a minute, before we go down that path. So, if I understand you correctly, you're asking this board to deny this request for a variance?
The zero footage, yes, we are.
Yeah, for the zero, so
And if we, for the zero. So, if we were to deny this request, then he would be allowed to come before us for something different. He'd have to come back and say, let's just say five feet, three feet, or whatever it may be, and he would end up having to, if we granted that relief, he'd have to end up basically cutting his, he could leave the wall where it is, and he would end up cutting his deck and bringing it back. Do you think that that's going to address the concerns that have been raised in that letter?
The letter from Dan Perry?
Because he's basically saying that they're concerned about the usage of the yard as basically an area, let me just read it, let me read this. Mr. Calhada's residence is close to a number of existing grave sites and is immediately adjacent, and I'm reading for the viewers at home, with your permission, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
I'm reading the letter from Attorney Dan Perry.
Got my permission to do that.
All right, thank you. And is immediately adjacent to an area that the cemetery expects to utilize in the near future for expansion. The cemetery believes that the noise and activity associated with an outdoor kitchen and grill will diminish the atmosphere of solemn calm and quietness that the cemetery seeks to foster, as appropriate for both intermittent cer, intermittent ceremonies and for persons visiting the remains of their deceased loved ones. The cemetery recognizes that there is a limit to the extent to which it can screen off the effects of the activities of its residential neighbors, but nevertheless wants to restrict that impact at least to the scope dictated by zoning regulations. So, it's very well written, right, I'll give, I'll give it to Mr. Perry, but, you know, I always look at what the rationale, and what the meaning or the reasoning is for someone wanting to prohibit this. I don't see where, even if the deck is ten feet away, if this gentleman is utilizing his rear yard, and I'm not trying to make arguments for him, I'm looking at this basically as objectively as I can, because the easiest decision for me to make here today is just to say, no, you're not, we're not going to grant a zero setback. And I'm inclined to do that, but I'm also looking at, all right, well, what's that going to solve here, and where is the, where's the opposition coming from? The opposition's coming from an imposition that may come about as a result of him using the backyard. But if he's five feet away, three feet away, or zero feet away, I don't see where that imposition's any different from what you're concerned with. And I'm sure you may have a differing opinion about that, but when I look at it objectively, as objectively as I can, I don't see where, you know, having him cut this deck, and I'm not saying he shouldn't have to, but having him cut this deck doesn't necessarily address the concern that the Board for the cemetery has, in my opinion. So, and I know
Mr. Maderas, I, I, you're exactly right, but as I understand it, if this gentleman takes the whole deck off, leaves everything there, we don't have any jurisdiction, is that correct?
And not only that, my
And, and so the complaints that this supposedly trustees have, I don't, nobody's here, the complaints that they have is that the noise, the same thing's going to exist. All, all we're going to do is say to this gentleman who built a great house, paying taxes, take the deck off to please the Board of Trustees that aren't here complaining. And I have all the respect for Mr. Perry, but I agree with you, well-written, but it doesn't make any sense. We're not going to change anything. I think the issue you brought out originally, did this gentleman go out and build this without a permit and just said, hey, I'm going to do what I want to do, and then I'll ask for forgiveness, I'll pay a fine? I don't, I looked at his property, he doesn't, I don't know this gentleman. He doesn't look like a guy that's worried about doing things without a permit. I'm sure he got a building permit when he built his house, and I'm sure he's paid his taxes, because he wouldn't be here, but you're exactly right, Mr. Maderas. What are we going to accomplish here by just saying, and I'm not trying to, I'm just saying, as a practical matter, he's got a beautiful house there, and if that was a patio, i, i, if it's a patio and it, it pavers, we're here wasting our time, because the noise, and I don't think he's, he, he put a, a nice fence there, I think he did, to try to give him some privacy and, and block any noise, but he doesn't look like a potty animal that he's going to be having, he said that at the last meeting, I'm not going to be out there, I don't know, I really don't think, and I have a lot of respect, I, I have family in that, he says he's got a father, or he's got family right in that cemetery too. We certainly going to respect those people there, but this letter and this objection has put us in a position, a position like, are we really going to deny this man relief? When, when I don't even think he needs to be here, honestly, I think if we just, if we just say, look, we're going to deny, you're not going to get a variance, what, what if we accomplish? Are we, are we also going to tell them, now you're going to take down the wooden structure? Is that, is that what we're going to do?
Well, no, that was
No, no, that's my question, are we going to tell them now, we're going to deny you a variance? Because not one person from the cemetery's here, not one trustee's here, we're going to say, take down that deck and have your parties, do whatever you want to do, because we're not going to give you a variance. We're, we're just going to deny you a variance, and the next step is, what's going to happen? The town's going to hire a town council for hundreds of thousands of dollars to take, take down the deck, go to court and say, let's fight this. That's, that's how I see this. I just see this as problematic for this board, and I agree a hundred percent where we don't give variances with zero clearance there, and I agree, but I just don't think that man put a structure up there, so if he takes, if he took a saw and took the boards off the house, is that okay? Can we, can we make that decision? Just say, cut, cut the boards away from the house, so it's not attached to the house. Isn't it a patio now? I don't know, you're the engineer, is it a patio if he does that?
No, because of the height.
No, but I think he, the, the building commission never said anything about the height.
It has stairs.
What?
It's over two feet and has stairs.
Okay.
I agree with, I disagree with you, Attorney Farrier, with the fact that he doesn't need to be here, because clearly, based on our bylaws, he has to be here. But I do agree with you that if he were, let's assume he didn't build the deck, and he just built a, basically, a paver, same area, right up to the property line, and utilize it, so he'd be basically thirty inch lower than where he is, and it was all pavers, and he had his kitchen, and he had his stove or his grill right up to the property line, he could do that.
He wouldn't be here.
He wouldn't be.
And the concern is that
We'd have no jurisdiction over the issue. So now, basically, he's conducting the same operation thirty inches higher than he's otherwise allowed. That's one way to utilize it.
So, we're arguing about thirty inches?
Well, we are, but the thing is
Not, not the, not the setback, we're arguing about thirty inches, right? Because if we, if he takes the deck out tomorrow, take the deck out, what jurisdiction do we have?
We don't.
Okay, so we're arguing about thirty inches?
Well, I mean
And that size doesn't matter.
Well, no, thirty inches is, is the dimension, it's same as
I know, but it's not
So, it's not
Well, it's not the, it's not the setback, because I don't think it matters, because what I said, no matter, no matter what happens here, he's going to, he can put his gas grill right up against that fence that he's got, is that correct?
Correct.
Well, not if it's on
It's a yes or no?
Not if, not if it's on the deck.
No, I just said that, if he takes the deck out
He can have
So, so what Dan Perry's complaining about is not the structure,
Right.
not the deck. What he's complaining about is that this guy might have wild parties there, and it's going to bother the peace and quiet, which I don't want, I don't want anybody to bother the peace and quiet in the cemetery. I'm just saying, are we here trying to cut a hair, a piece of hair with a knife? Or should we say to this man, I don't know what we should say, because I agreed that this board shouldn't say, shouldn't sanction, if he did this intentionally, come back and say, forgive me, well, I made a mistake, I'll pay the fine.
I have a problem
We've had clients like that.
I have a problem.
I have problems with that. I don't think he did that. I, I think he, he, the building inspector went there and said, cut, cut the roof off there. But again, then again, I said, I don't know, I just feel, I feel bad for
We want to see if there's anyone else?
Yes, absolutely. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for this tonight? I don't see anyone. Okay, we'll go back to discussion. So, I, I think it's case-by-case basis, I think we need to look at this. I, I agree that if it was a patio or a deck, it's the same impact on the cemetery. This is what I said last time, I said if
You were leaning in that direction already, I understand that.
Yes.
And it makes sense.
It doesn't. Now, my, the, the question is, now, the next, this is a variance, it's not a special permit.
Right.
So, I need to look at the lot to see, you know, because I think we mentioned something, I think even Attorney Human at the last meeting said, you know, you got room to the east, or, you know, something
One of the things is, this gentleman has a significant amount of wetlands on this property as well.
That's, that's what I wanted to look at.
Which caused, which caused them to have to build this house
Exactly, in that corner.
to be a certain number of feet, so they were sort of locked in as to where they could place the house
I agree.
in relation to the lot lines and in relation to the perimeters of the wetlands.
I, I agree, that's
And one of the things that we have as a condition for a variance is
Soil.
soil conditions. So, that gets him through possibly one of the prongs of the variance test, but I don't know whether or not you've given that, all this analysis until such time as now
No.
now that we've looked at all this
Right.
collectively as a board, also taking in all the information from all the
Built, yeah.
members of the public. So, you know, I'm here to, I'm here to follow, you know, what you feel
And I wanted to get a feeling where we, where we going with this too, with the other board members. So, I think I'm, and this, I mentioned this last week too, so, and unfortunately, at the last meeting, I didn't know this was a, I thought it was a proposed structure, because the plans indicated that this was a proposed structure. If it, if I knew it was, you know, I didn't have a chance to go out and take a look at it, you know, I would have asked for an as-built plan to show what's there, so we know, you know. So, I, I think
The thing is, is this, I didn't know it was a structure already built until I saw photos, but when you look at these plans
That's what I'm saying.
none of it's laid out. So, basically, these plans are showing a snapshot of what this looked like
I, I agree, I mean, you know
So, I'm not going to say it was deceiving, but it wasn't all
No, no, it's not deceiving, but I mean, I didn't, you know
Can I ask you a question? The, the, the pictures that are here, that I'm looking at right now, there's no, there's no number exhibit on it, who provided this board with these pictures?
I believe it was the cemetery.
That's what I figured, but they're, they're very deceiving, because it doesn't show any, this, this picture, it shows pavers here, I don't see any violation here.
No, this is no, this is no violation.
That's his property.
Yeah. That's, that's exactly what I said.
Yeah.
Like, he could have that, pavers all around the property if he wants to.
I know, so, but what I'm saying is, but they're complaining, so this, there's, instead of the pavers being here, this other photo, it doesn't show the deck, right? There's no deck there.
It's hard to
It's hard to see, but
But I was there, and it's really hard to take, I took a few pictures, and I'm not sure how they came up, so
Well, this, this, this photo, the gentleman provided today
Shows everything.
but I didn't even see this elevation here, because I, I didn't go around this side. It, it looked like this deck is on ground level, but now I see the stairs, I didn't see this part of it.
The, the other, because, because of the land slopes this way, so the other part is higher.
So, the other side looks just like it was, instead of pavers, it looks like wood.
I get a sense of where you are on this. Mr. Chair, what's your thought?
Uh, my thought is, you know, this is a unique, like, the unique case, so I have
I think I've never seen one like this.
Okay, first of all, because, because of the, the adjacent properties, you know, and because, because of the setting, like you said, it's a big piece of property, but you can only access, and that's the reason. I had a hard time finding the house until I thought it was the one before, until I[1614.16] until I went down and looked at the driveway, so you have to, you know, you have a long driveway to get to the property because of the wetlands. Now, setting a precedent, that's the only thing that I'm concerned about. And I personally would be more comfortable with saying, hey, maybe we can take five feet off the, the deck on the higher side to make it comply, and this way, we can, we did our things, we considered as a setback for a shed or a structure. So this way, we're not setting, you know, but again, too, I can, I can entertain.
What does it accomplish?
It's exactly, I, then, I can look at this and say, you know, this is, in this situation, this is not accomplishing anything really, you know, except enforcing our zoning bylaws somehow. Uh, and again, I, I can go either way, I think, I don't have an issue with, and again, I have respect to the cemetery and to the people next door and to, you know, but the, the impact from the deck is not what was projected to us in, in the letter. I don't, I'm, I didn't buy that, you know, so it's, like I said, you still can go down to the other side where you don't have a deck and walk on the grass and gather and, and, and party and whatever, do whatever you need to do, and, you know.
Yeah, you're talking about the impact to the, but my question, and, you know, I'm the youngest member of the board here, not in age.
Wisdom and not.
I'm the youngest member of the board, you guys been a long time, and you guys are a lot smarter than I am. My question is, what are we accomplishing, so we deny this man the variance, what happens next? Does he still?
Well, he's got, he's got an op, he's got options as to whether or not he comes, comes back to us with another proposal at some other footage of distance.
And he doesn't come back, we deny him.
Let's not, no, let's not deny him, we'll give him the chance, I mentioned it at the last meeting. That if we withdraw the application without prejudice, you can come back with the revised plan. Or we can continue this hearing and say, if Mr. Colada might come back and say, you know, I might have, I'm not saying that you wanna do it, I might cut five feet off, and now I'm not asking for zero, I'm asking for five. So.
Let me ask you, Mr. Chair, would it be appropriate if we continued this matter and had the building commissioner in here and discuss, I don't know if that's appropriate, because.
But I, I don't think the, I don't think the building commissioner wants to be here, because I think even from the first time he said, you know, why did they, why did they tell you to come back to me, right? I, I believe.
Was it, is it the new building commissioner said, what?
That is correct, yes.
This, this is, this bill, this patio was built a few years ago, a couple of years ago?
That's correct, I haven't touched it in a couple of years.
If I may, Walter, I think he's already made his ruling, he's determined it's a structure and it's obviously within the setback.
I didn't see that though.
There's nothing else for him to do, now it lies with us, we have a tough decision to make. His, his position's gonna be, you guys need to make a decision, to him, it makes no difference. We grant it, it makes no difference, if we deny it, it makes no difference to him.
If we deny it, then the, the, the structure is not in compliance, and then you're, he's the enforcement officer. I mean, he, he can say, I want this deck cut back at the twenty foot setback. He, he could say that as the enforcement officer.
He could.
But if we do, if we make a decision that we might wanna grant either zero or a five or three or two or seven or eight, whatever it is, it's gonna be the decision, and he needs to, and he'll go by that decision.
So, uh, if I, if I may, Mr. Chair, if, if we make a decision today to say, we want this gentleman to cut back his deck five, seven feet, then, then we grant the variance, he, cause he would be in compliance with the, the setback requirement, is that what you said?
He won't be in compliance, we'll grant the variance for five feet.
Cause he can't be twenty feet.
Correct.
Alright, so if we, if we allow this gentleman to withdraw his variance, then we don't see him again until, until the building inspector does something, I assume, right?
Yeah, because he's in violation.
Or he wants to be in compliance and he, before the building inspector.
Nothing to do with us.
No.
He wants to, if he withdraws his variance and he goes on his merry way, we don't see this gentleman again unless the building inspector goes here and says, well, you gotta do something, cause you're in violation, is that correct?
That's correct, but I don't think he wants to be in that position.
That's the, that's what would follow.
Yeah, that, that's what would follow, but we have no control over that.
No.
No, he's not before us. But I just, I, I agree with you guys, this is a very.
That doesn't solve anything.
No, what, it's gonna, it's not gonna solve anything, but what is the alternative here? We got two, we got two things, we can deny this variance, right? Or he can withdraw it. Am I wrong?
Or I think I said something at the last meeting.
Or we can make some suggestions to him.
Modify the plan, come back.
Basically, modify the plan, come back with a revised proposal, and then we could consider that revised proposal. So I guess that's another option that we could consider.
I think I, I said that at the last meeting.
Well, why don't we continue it and then have him come back with a revised plan if he wants?
Or a hardship.
If you people are inclined to deny this, right?
But we're back, we're back to the argument where we're at, and I don't wanna be circular in this, and we're not gonna beat a dead horse, but we're back to, okay, so what is he gonna come back with? He doesn't know where this board would feel comfortable with, is it three feet, four, five? What is the footage that we feel comfortable with?
I'll make it clear now.
Number one, and number two, the second thing is, is, let's assume we say it's, let's say we say it's four feet, okay? Now he's gonna go cut his, he's gonna go cut his deck, it's back four feet. Does the four feet really make that much of a difference for the concerns of the abutter, who I presume was probably.
Of course it doesn't, the concerns are crazy, it's, it's a question of whether we're gonna, you know, I, I don't see this gentleman where he has a legitimate variance. I don't see how we can write a decision to say. If you look at the statute, how can we write a decision saying that this man's entitled to a variance?
Well, we've been very, very crafty in the past, and we have some very, very good interpretations of, and we've already got one of the criteria established, which is the fact that he has, he has a wetlands on the premises that really limit his usability of the property.
And the structure that, the variance he's asking for is not a, it's not a structure, it's, it's a deck. Which is a structure.
I think it's a patio, I don't think it's a, you know, I, I don't see the difference between wood and, you guys.
We're gonna agree to disagree on that one.
Well, you're saying because he elevated it, I don't know, I guess he gets an option, put the, put the wood deck on the ground, if, if he does, if he decides that's an option, just take it out, put patio, pavers. We're wasting that time.
Alright, we've already given us a lot of consideration, I think we've covered all the issues that are here. Any suggestions, Mr. Chair?
Uh, my suggestion, I, I, I think same as I said last time, Mr. Colada, I mean, we can continue the hearing. If we deny you this tonight, you can't come back for another two years, so it's not fair. So we always gave the applicants or petitions all the, gave them the option to withdraw without prejudice. That gives you time to go back, reflect on what you wanna do, talk again, talk to the building commissioner again, maybe, you know, and another option would be to continue this, and again, look at other options and see what you can do. You mentioned that most of the, the, the east side of the deck is almost at level.
Correct.
So I guess that the deeper side on the, on the west side, that's the deep, that's the, that's the height.
It's around twenty-four inches.
I personally feel comfortable with the five foot setback to consider this as a shed, you know, if you take it back to, I'm not sure how far the, the roof over the, the canopy is from the property.
I would have to cut it back to.
To where that roof is.
To the low side of that roof, that roof area, that's correct.
That's an option, I'm not saying. I think like five feet or.
It's just over five feet, five foot two, five foot three, from, from, from the, the outside of the wall that I built, not from the fence.
Let me ask you something else, have you had conversations with Ms. Dias about their concerns?
Negative.
You don't think it'd be wise to have conversations with them and maybe you could find some middle ground here with some type of a buffer, maybe with shrubbery, shrubbery can be ten, twelve feet tall, you can buy things that are really, really nice, really tall, that provide much more screening than any type of fence.
Mike, it's screened, I, I went there, I couldn't see anything, I really couldn't see anything.
Okay, but the thing is, you say you couldn't, but the, the fence cannot be more than six feet, this thing's thirty inches high. If someone stands on top of the deck, they can be seen by the people that are in the cemetery.
Not with the, not with the shrubbery and the foliage that's there now, but.
In the summertime, but in the wintertime.
In the winter, maybe, maybe.
So I don't know, I, I think they also, you know, have them, them knowing now that this board is inclined to work with you, that's a sense, the pulse I'm sensing here, I would strongly suggest that you speak to Ms. Dias or whoever else has authority on behalf of this organization, to see if there's something that they would be comfortable with, because we're not gonna make the deck go, I'm not gonna make you remove the whole deck.
No.
That's not gonna happen, so if they don't know that already, they know it now, that's just me speaking, right? I'm only one vote, and I'm not the chairman.
No, no, it doesn't, it's, there's no chairman, or it's, one vote out of three, we need, it's the same, they're all the same. It's not, my vote is not twice.
You need a unanimous decision from all three of us, I'm not gonna make you pull this back twenty feet, but I'm also wanting to make you cut it back to something, but also understanding that the accom, what are we accomplishing, alright, what are we accomplishing? And I think, you know, Attorney Farrier has made a good argument for you, and I know he doesn't represent you, that he feels, in his opinion, that you didn't do this in one of those situations where it's easier to request and, and ask for forgiveness versus, you know, asking for permission. Kinda persuaded me on that a little bit, so as a result, I'm giving you consideration on this, and I haven't seen anything that would lead me to believe that from your side of this, other than the fact that it's been built already, and also other than the fact that it wasn't really published in any of the documents that were submitted to us, that, hey, by the way, this is already here, but I understand, you know, you, you're obviously, you know, you're advocating for yourself on this. I would suggest, again, and I wanna sound like a broken record, and that's why I'm willing, and I think the, the chairman's willing to grant you a continuance, as much time as you need, right? Your deck is already there, as much time as you need to speak to them about what it is that they could find that would make them happy in addressing the concerns about the noise and whatever type of imposition that they would sustain as a result of the use of this deck. And if there's something there, and it's gonna cost maybe some money for you to do that, but you would still probably be able to have the deck possibly intact, if that's something you're able to work out. So, and I'm not saying that that would happen, but I think that if they came to us, at least me, they came to, to us and I were listening to them say, if he does A or B, we'd be, we would not be in opposition, not gonna say in support, but we'd not be in opposition to this, then maybe that would work.
I understand.
So I guess it's up to you as to whether or not you're willing to continue the matter, and when's our next date?
August twentieth, we have two cases and a meeting.
And I don't know if August twentieth is enough time, but.
What's the one after?
Yeah, September what? September tenth, that gives you roughly a month and a half, not even, yeah, a month, yeah, about a month and a half, to speak to them and see whether or not there's something that you could do that appease their concerns. And gentlemen, if you think that this is misplaced, that this suggestion is misplaced, I'm willing, I'm all ears to, to say, to hear or to, you know, listen to you folks and tell me that this is not a good idea.
No, I think it's an excellent idea, I mean, I, I just don't, I feel sorry for this gentleman, cause I, I spent some time and looking, he's got a beautiful house, everything's done first class, and I don't see, and I respect Dan Perry tremendously, but I don't see where, I don't, like I said, there's not a trustee, if it's trustees from the cemetery, I really think your suggestion, talk to these people, find out, because, does it make any sense, maybe I'm missing something, if he just takes the whole thing down, nothing's gonna change, he could have parties there all night, he could have parties all day, all day, so what are they gonna complain about? He said, now he's, the trustee's gonna come here and say he's having too many parties?
Well, it's outside our jurisdiction if he does that.
I know, that's what I'm saying, but our jurisdiction here is that you got a patio there, you built it without a permit, shame on you, but that happens. I don't, I don't think you did it intentionally, and you don't really have anybody here saying you're causing a problem. How, how long has that deck been here?
About two, I, if I had to, again, it's been a while, I'd say about two years, maybe a little bit.
Does anybody, does anybody in this board know if we've had a complaint or the town's had a complaint?
Hasn't been any complaints that I'm aware of.
No. I, I think that's an excellent idea, give this gentleman a ti, ti, time, come back again and see if we can work something out where that, so nobody gets hurt, I mean, we're here to help people.
Of course.
And we're also worried about anybody that's an abutter, that has a legitimate concern, but I'm also concerned, and I agree, going over the, I, I am concerned, and Mr. Maderas and my chairman here, they're, they're a lot more experienced than I am in this board, but given a variance is not an easy thing, you have to comply, and we write decisions here, the board writes decisions that say, you have to comply with the law. And zero setback, it, I don't see how we can do it.
I didn't know what else to.
We don't wanna set a precedent, and I agree completely with what they're saying here, but I just, I'm looking at the totality of the situation here, and I feel, I feel that.
I, I agree.
Yeah.
We're trying to work with everyone.
Yeah.
Come up with something that's gonna be when, when to everyone, you know, so we don't want you to. Also, if you wanna take a look at the deck, see how it's framed, also, if you cut, you know, like, you might say, I don't wanna cut, I'm not sure how it's framed.
It has, it has beams on either side and one down the middle.
So your framing is the, is the.
It goes from.
Parallel to the cemetery or per, the.
It's perpendicular to the cemetery, so the beams go from east to west.
Beam then.
Well, no, the beams go east to west, and the, the framing, the actual deck, the actual joists go north to south, so it's picture framed essentially, and it has the two beams on either end and they're sitting on sonotubes. That deck does, that deck is connected by, by proximity, not connected by structure. If that makes sense.
Yeah, yeah.
So in essence, it butts the house and not necessarily screwed or drilled into the house.
Correct, that's why, that's one of the reasons why I didn't think it was an issue, again, I should've gone to the commissioner, because my assumption was that it was a ground-level patio, in that I'm, instead of using pavers, I was using wood, that's, that's, and that's basically where it came from.
On one side it is.
Correct, about eighty percent of it, and the ground slopes steeply towards the western side.
That's gonna help us in that decision anyway.
I agree, I agree.
That's why, you know, I mean, worst case, might be cutting like a.
We'll give you an opportunity to do that, alright?
Okay.
Are you willing to do that?
I'm, I'm willing to make this work one way or the other.
I, I make a motion that we continue case number twenty-five dash four, ZAV twenty-five dash four, to September, September tenth at six o'clock PM.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There's only one situation, you're gonna have to, if there's any timing issues with this, if we need you to sign an extension, we'll do so.
Not a problem.
You need to sign an extension, cause otherwise, we only have a certain amount of time, and if it's not acted upon, it's deemed granted, so if you don't agree to sign that, in the event that this goes beyond September tenth, we'll have to have an emergency meeting to determine how we're gonna handle it, okay?
Understood.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
She'll let you know if that's an issue. Alright, so. Moving on to the next matter on tonight's agenda is special permit, ZSP twenty-five dash four, Nicholas Pleis, that's how I pronounce it, subject property located at forty-six Lakeside Avenue, also known as MAP one eighty-six, lot three dash one, property's located in a single residence B district, and this, this matter was advertised on June ninth, June nineteenth and June twenty-sixth of this year.
Make a motion that we waive the reading of the abutter's list.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. The petitioner is seeking a special permit to reduce side guard setbacks from the required twenty feet to six and a half feet, expanding on the pre-existing non-conforming structure.
Yeah, that's true.
Also to increase lock coverage from fifty-two point one percent to fifty-five point five percent in an aquifer zone three district. They're seeking to construct a one-stall garage attached to the east side of the residence, and they seeking, they're seeking relief on the Article three seventy-five dash six point two B two, non-conforming structures, and Article three seventy-five dash twenty-eight point five B, subsection eight prohibited uses. So, let's see what I've got here. I've got a denial letter from the building inspector. Letter's dated May eighth, it's addressed to Mr. Pleis. I've reviewed your application, and at this time, your proposal cannot be approved due to non-compliance with current zoning regulations. Applicant proposing addition of a one-stall garage attached to the east side of the residence, seeking to reduce side guard setbacks from the required twenty feet to six and a half feet, expanding on the pre-existing non-conforming structure. Also seeking to increase lock coverage from fifty-two point one to fifty-five point five in an aquifer zone three, therefore special permits required. Your application's being denied under the following section of the zoning bylaw, and it's three seventy-five dash six point two B two, and it has to do with the fact that any expansion or alteration of a structure cannot conform with the development standards for structures in which zoning district in which the structure is located, the structure may be extended or altered only by special permit. And here, there's also the aquifer zone three, in which there's lock coverage requirements, and they're seeking a relief from that as well. So that's the letter from the building inspector. I also have basically comments from the board of health that just confirming that the property is served by town water and sewer, conservation says, CWSI twenty-four dash forty-one, it would appear that a wetland permit filing is required, is this proposed garage on a slab or footing? That would determine the type of filing. I've attached the site plans to this document, which includes all the information about this garage. I am sure if you have access, but if you do, you can find, excuse me, I am not sure if you have access, but if you do, you can find the plans for a garage slab on eight point five. I have occupied the plan for the garage slab below for quicker reference, please let me know if you need more information, I believe this is a response.
That was my response.
I don't know why it's here, but that's the response they put in here. Definitely a notice of intent filing is stated in WS one twenty-four dash forty-one, and the DPW has their normal requirements, which I'm not gonna read into the record because we've read them in before, and they're always the same. Alright, so at this time, I'm gonna call upon the petitioner or the petitioner's representative to come forward and state your case.
Good evening, my name's Nicholas Pleis, reside at forty-six Lakeside Ave with my wife and my child. So the proposal is a attached one-stall garage, like I stated in the original letter. I had attached the, everything when I submitted it, it's gonna be going for six and a half off the side, which I've already spoken to my neighbors on that side, which would be probably the only person affecting it, they have no issues with it, there's still gonna be a four-foot walkway on the side in between my property line and the new structure, yeah.
You also have some aquifer relief that you're seeking for, is that correct?
A special permit to increase, three percent or something.
Alright. Gentlemen, you have any questions of this gentleman?
I don't have any at this time.
I know it's straightforward, but sometimes we have some concerns. I know it's straightforward, but sometimes we have some concerns.
So I have a couple of questions. So on the first floor, you have the garage, right?
Yes.
And I see like an eight-foot wide door on the other side, is that for like bringing in like a tractor or something?
To get the lawnmower and stuff in and out. So it would just be, so it's going to be a smaller one-stall door on the back side and then on the front side would be a wider garage door.
Okay, and on the second floor, you have two offices you show here?
Yep, we're going to do two offices and a larger room for just some small gym equipment.
Some what? Can you hear you?
Small gym equipment.
There's no showers on this.
No water will be added.
No bathroom facilities or anything?
No bathroom, no.
All right. That addresses those concerns.
Mr. Chair, can I, what is the purpose of the two offices? What businesses are going in there? Are just personal offices?
Oh yeah, just personal offices, you know, it's not really like business, it's just my office where I keep my computer and everything like that. It's nothing. Related.
Two offices?
Oh yeah, one for my wife too.
Oh, okay.
So she can set up, you know, her stuff.
Do you do like remote work out of the house?
No, I got like a little gaming setup, so I'll go in there for gaming. I have a room right now in my house, but we plan on having two children, so we have two bedrooms in the house, so that's why I'd like to move my office up there.
All right, if there are no other questions, I'll move on. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either in favor or in opposition or opposition to this petition? I can report to the viewers at home that there are only two other individuals and I believe they're here for the next case. So there's no one here either in opposition or in support of this petition. Gentlemen, we usually keep the public hearing open on this matter. I've got some proposed findings that I'd be more than glad to have you review with me. Well, they're pretty straightforward. I'll just read them into the record and then you guys can decide whether or not. It's always nice to follow along, but if you don't have that, that's okay.
That's okay, just don't do it in Portuguese.
Yeah. Excuse me? All right. The subject property is located at 48 Lakeside Avenue, Dartmouth, Massachusetts and has been owned by the petitioner since July of 2017. And if there's anything here that's incorrect, I want you to just interrupt me, okay?
That's 46 Lakeside Ave.
46, yeah, that's what I thought.
So I got 48, I only have 48. That's why I asked you to interrupt me. The property is improved by a single-family home and is located within the single residence B zoning district and the aquifer zone three protection district. The existing home is a pre-existing non-conforming structure?
Uh, wait a minute. I think he was granted a special permit to, right?
Special, I've never been for a special, this is my first time.
There was a special permit that was granted for this property or variance, let me see. Right? Was that this one for you? Was that a variance or a special permit? If it's a variance, then it's conforming. Right? What was that amendment for?
This is an amendment. This is an amendment or something. I don't know what the original one was, it doesn't say.
A variance, okay, variance slash special permit.
Approved the previously approved variance slash special permit, so I don't know which one was it.
I would cross that out because then it wouldn't be non-conforming because.
Well, you don't know what we granted the variance for. They may not have addressed anything beyond that. I don't know what it was.
Maybe you want to look at the.
I'd rather just leave it at that.
Must have been the previous owners. I've never been before.
Yeah, it was a previous owner. It actually only, it only came to my attention just a few minutes before this hearing.
The reason I remember, I was at this case 2009, that's why I remember the address, so.
Okay, yep, that's when they built it.
Variance hearing, it was a variance. It says here, to allow relief, perimeter setbacks was asked for an existing non-conforming structure to be raised and for the construction of a new single-family dwelling in its place. So they're asking for something to be raised, there was a building in there to be raised and they built a new structure. So if that's true, then that variance allowed for that building. It's not pre-existing non-conforming.
Right, and they should have applied for a modification of that variance probably, but it's okay. I mean, I don't know.
It's a special permit anyway. The existing home is 17.8 feet from the street and 25.3 feet from the east side perimeter lot line. The petitioner seeks a variance to construct an 18-foot, 6-inch by 24-foot garage, six and a half feet from the side lot line. The petitioner seeks relief from article 375-6.2B2, non-conforming structures. Petitioner also seeks relief from article 375-28.5B8, prohibited uses, to increase lot coverage from 52.1 to 55.5 in an aquifer zone three district. The board finds that after review of the submitted plans, that the nature of the proposed garage is proposed in a manner that will be appropriate to the national, excuse me, to the natural topography, soils and other characteristics of the proposed site and the board finds that the construction of an 18-foot, 6-inch by 24-foot garage would not be detrimental to the neighborhood and is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning bylaw and the usual conditions.
You might want to see some, yeah, I mean, they have to go for.
Well, they got to get all permits, necessary permits from other town boards and everything, DPW, conservation commission, you know, you've got those concerns, whatever it is. That's beyond what we do here, but it's a requirement in order for you to be able to have the variance granted, okay? All right, gentlemen.
Special permit, did you say?
Any comments?
No, I have none.
Mr. Chair, I mean, Mr. Schuber?
No, did you say both the special, yeah, the special permit?
And they said they were in harmony, general purpose and intent of zoning bylaw.
No, no, it is a special permit for the lot coverage, you have it, right? And then was the, the other one was a special permit to increase the non-conformity?
Yes, we can also say that that one's in harmony with the general purpose and intent of bylaw.
Seeking relief from article, okay, the 375-6252, right? That's to increase the non-conformity, correct? That's a special permit for the.
Yes.
For the setback.
It's a special permit.
Yeah, I would just, just, yeah, add that.
That's it. All right, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
I make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. So, what's your pleasure, gentlemen?
I make a motion that we approve special permit ZSP 25-4 with the conditions and the findings as stated.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. Good luck.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Very welcome. Moving on to the third and last petition on tonight's meeting, it's on the agenda, is ZAV 25-6. Petitioner applicant is Daniel Mello, the owner of the property is also Daniel Mello. Subject property is located at 33 Westwood Drive, also known as map 150 lot 9. It's located in the single residence A district and this case was legally advertised on June 19th and June 26th.
I make a motion that we waive the reading of the abuser's list.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The petitioner is seeking a variance to construct a nine-foot by five-foot porch addition to the front of the house, 19 feet from the street line encroaching into the required 30-foot setback. They're seeking relief on the article 375-7.4D4, development standards and exemptions from setback requirements. All right, let's see what we've got for letters. Let's start off first with a denial letter from the building department. It's addressed to Mr. Danny Mello. I've reviewed your application and at this time, your proposal cannot be approved due to non-compliance with current zoning regulations. Applicant seeking to build a nine-foot by five-foot porch addition on the front of the house, 19 feet from the street line encroaching into the required 30-foot front setback. House built in 1961, variance required. Your application is being denied in the following sections of zoning bylaw and basically it's the exemptions where buildings or structures which are legally in existence prior to October 26, 1993 require that they be setback and placed 10 feet from all perimeter lot lines or 30 feet from a street line. And it is, it indicates that the property is located within the single residence A district. In addition, I must have comments here from board of health. Says here applicant indicated town water and sewer. DPW has their normal restrictions other than this. It says the proposed site plans do not show existing utilities. All existing utilities shall be shown on site plan to avoid conflict with utilities during construction. So obviously that's something that we can require that they have amended. And the rest is the usual requirements of the DPW, so we'll have to add that as a requirement. All right, so at this time, I'm going to call upon the petitioner or their representative to come forth and state your case.
Good evening, Daniel Mello. I live at 33 Westwood Drive. Right now, there's a porch already established, like a front porch and I just want to go an extra foot to bring the step forward. And that brings this, I don't know, I won't get the setback from the front steps to the property line, I mean, to the street.
All right, well, I look here at this plan, Mr. Mello, and I noticed that it doesn't have a dimension for the actual distance of the home from the front street line as it exists.
24 feet.
How do you know it's 24?
Because it's got 20, 19 and 5.
19 and 5.
I had Richard, my engineer, draw it up and I think he says I got 19 feet right now.
Oh, no one, who did that?
Richard, Richard from Prime Engineer.
That should have been a special permit, not a variance, because it's okay, you're asking for a variance, but it's already, you're already non-conforming with the setback. You're only increasing it by another foot.
And that's why it would have been nice to have an actual dimension rather than be doing math with this.
You know, it's the same as a previous one, but I don't know why this is considered a variance.
All right, do you have any questions of this petition?
Who filed the application for you?
I filed it myself, yeah. I just had Richard from Prime draw up the setbacks.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's how he did it, yeah.
No, but he only followed what the building inspector said. Building inspector said a variance is required.
But.
And it contradicts the prior one.
Yes.
I had Richard from the, from the building inspector said I had to go for a variance for the extra foot.
Yeah.
For the front property, because I got plenty on the sides. It's just I don't have enough on the front.
Yeah, you're okay, you're going to be fine.
All right, so if there are no other questions, I'll ask if anyone in the audience, is there anyone in the audience that would like to come forward and speak either in favor or in opposition to this petition? I can, I can tell the members at home, who are members, excuse me, that the viewers at home, that there's no one here to speak either in favor or in opposition to this petition. There not being anyone either in favor or in opposition, I'm going to move forward with some proposed findings. Do we have those?
Yes.
Straightforward.
Yeah, it's straightforward. There's three of them there. There's only two. All right, gentlemen, and I can be interrupted if there's anything in here that contradicts what you're understanding and that's why I leave the public hearing open, okay? The subject property is located at 33 Westwood Drive, Dartmouth, Massachusetts and has been owned by the petitioner since February 2020. The property is improved by a single-family home and is located within a single residence A zoning district. The lot is a pre-existing non-conforming lot as it only has 19,568 square feet. The existing home was built prior to 1993 and is.
24.
24 feet from the street.
Yeah. The home.
And 14.9 feet from the east side perimeter lot line. The petitioner seeks a variance to construct a nine-by-five porch addition to the front of the house, 19 feet from the street line encroaching into the required 30-foot front step back. The petitioner seeks relief from section 375-7.4D4, exemption from setback requirements. Buildings and structures which are legally in existence prior to October 26, 1993 may be placed a minimum of 10 feet from all perimeter lot lines or 30 feet from street lines. The board finds that the petitioner's request meets the requirements prescribed on the Mass General Law 48, section 10. Subpart, the first, the first element is there are circumstances related to soils, shape and topography that especially affect the subject property that do not generally affect the zoning district in which the structure or land is located. These are things that you're supposed to persuade us on in order for us to find that you're entitled to a variance. So I'm, this is what I propose. The subject prop, the subject lot is a pre-existing and non-conforming current single residence A district, excuse me. The single, the subject lot is a pre-existing and non-conforming lot.
Yeah, the lot and the structure. So I should have went for a special permit?
No, well, the building inspector told you to go for a variance.
Yeah, because I asked him, should I go for?
We'll just leave it at that so there's no confusion. But I agree with what he was saying. The subject lot is a pre-existing and non-conforming lot. Let's say we should put this, pre-existing and non-conforming lot. The structure.
Is an existing non-conforming.
Is an existing non-conforming structure.
24 feet.
All right, period. The location of the dwelling 24 feet from the existing street line limits the petitioner's ability to expand the home to the north. Right direction, north?
Yep.
Okay. Two, a literal enforcement of the provisions of the bylaw would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the petitioner. The proposed porch will provide petitioner with a safer form of ingress and egress to the front of the home. Three, desirable relief may be granted without detriment to the public good. The subject property is located in a single residence A zoning district. The only structure on the property is a single-family home and is used for residential purposes. The proposed porch addition will not be a detriment to the public good. Four, the variance will not nullify or substantially derogate from the intent or purpose of the bylaw. The proposed porch addition 19 feet from the street line will not change the general character of the home as a single-family dwelling and therefore will not nullify or substantially derogate from the intent or purpose of the bylaw. Those are the rationales that I've come up with, gentlemen, is, oh, and we got to put in here, well, we'll put that as a condition, okay? We'll put that as a condition, so you add that as a condition. So we have the usual conditions, Mr. Mello, that basically say that you have to get all approvals from other town agencies prior to getting a building permit. So if there's conservation issues, if there's anything with DPW, you get those. But one of the things is the DPW is asking that your plan, and we're going to ask that you do the same, your plan does not show existing utilities. So if you could just show the existing utilities on that plan so that we, they can have it on there so that if there's any digging that goes on or anything to that effect, that it won't affect any electric line, power lines, sewer lines, they may be very distant from that, but that's one of the things that they're asking that be put on the plan. Just a matter of you going back to Mr., is it Reom on this? Go back to Mr. Reom, he can plot that out, put it on there and it becomes part of the record, okay?
Yep.
It's not going to hold up your application. And anything else, gentlemen?
I have none.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Moved that we close the public hearing for case ZAV 25-6.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. What's your pleasure, gentlemen?
I move we approve the variance for ZAV 25-6 with the conditions just set forth in the record.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. Congrats. Good luck. All right, moving on to the administrative portion of tonight's meeting. We have a few matters that we need to review and approve. If I can have that back. It was on the agenda, I need the agenda back. I'm lost without the agenda. All right, gentlemen, so the first thing we have for tonight is review and approval, first thing on the administrative portion, is review and approval administrative minutes of June 18th, 2025. I have no comments.
I have no comments.
If you don't have it, Mr. Frank.
No, I don't have it, but I.
We're going to give it to you right here, here you go.
I don't have any comments.
All right, so I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
I make a motion that we approve the administrative minutes of June 18th, 2025.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. Next is review and approval of variance ZAV 25-4, minutes for 25 Thatcher Street. I have no comments, gentlemen.
I have no comments.
So all these are, they basically just opened the hearing, that's all we did, we closed the hearing, so these are pretty straightforward. I'll entertain a motion, gentlemen. Oh, is there something you want to correct to me?
Yeah, there's a couple of things. I'm, I'll just go into Michelle.
Okay, fair enough.
Minor stuff. Make a motion that we approve the minutes of variance ZAV 25-4 for 25 Thatcher Street.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it.